Our board study session tonight, November 1st. We appreciate you coming here. We'll start off with Janice. If you want to just take a few minutes and talk about the master board information that you've got for us.
Sure. Thank you.
And then it's your job to keep us all in line and make sure we do it.
I'll be humming you.
Please.
Well, as each one of you have the sheet that was that I asked the USBA if they would prepare for us so that it goes step by step. So you can log in to work on your master board certification and it goes through it. At the very end, she's just a sweetheart, Megan Mendez. She says, you know, if anybody has any questions, just have them email me or, you know, we can text her. But it is very informative and very helpful. And we, as a board with all the smart people on this board, I think that we can knock it out of the park. It's a really fun learning experience and their quizzes are fun. Here's what I would like to propose if it's agreeable to all of you. The deadline that we're to have it by is December 1st. But I would like to propose that we have accomplished this and we've completed each of our individual ones by the day before Thanksgiving. And by doing that, that'll give us a little time to, if there's any problems, any concerns, we can clarify it. Is that all agreeable? I think it's the 22nd of November.
Has it been about three years since we?
Did it as a whole?
Since we got the whole?
Probably. And we can all do 100%. It's just really a fun thing to get caught up with.
It's just nailing one foot to the ground, having to sit down for a couple hours and do them?
Well, like you said, yeah. And like I was up this morning, did one of the sessions and I think it took me probably 20 minutes and I completed it at 100%. It's very doable. If you'll just?
Already done?
No, just that one section.
Can you send me the answers?
Have you got a little remedial going on here you can help us with?
You bet. Just call. No, but I, Jen?
How do you know where you're at?
Is it for just board members with the business administrator?
No, it's business administrator and the superintendency. It will help us all if we can do it as a unified body.
I also think you would get a better chance of winning a prize at USBA, you know, if we'd.
That's true.
You won last issue, remember? And we did not.
And if, judging that we'll be done by the first, but we'll be done by the 22nd, your names all go into a drawing. But I forgot to ask what you're drawing for. But, you know, it's a prize.
And Melinda said that she would, or Megan said she would give us, you'll send her phone number out if you have any last minute.
Right.
Very good.
Excellent.
Thanks for doing that, Janice.
Oh, I'm excited because I want to see us all at 100% by the 22nd. So it's good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you. Let's move on with Mr. Williams, Matt Williams, please.
Thanks for letting me be here. Wanted to just start off and talk a little bit about junior high football and dispel some rumors. I'll be dispelling lots of rumors tonight. We had the junior high championship last night. Rocky Mountain beat Walcoast 24-14. This is a great game. While I was there, I had five parents talk to me about us getting rid of all athletics in the junior high. Three of them asked me if we were doing what Davis is doing and going to know helmeted sports. And so I wanted to dispel that. No, we're not looking at and proposing that we're getting rid of any junior high sports.
You say you know what sports?
Say that again.
So Davis is going to know?
Davis has no helmeted sports. So they don't play football, baseball, anything that requires a helmet. So what I would like you to know is, one, NAL is an extracurricular that we do at the junior high. This summer, we got a letter from the NAL that said that they were disbanding the national organization of NAL and so that this would be our last year. We heard that. We were looking into what we would do and replace NAL with. Two weeks ago, I got another letter that said they might continue because there's lots of support for NAL, which I think leads into that rumor mill of lots of things going away. So we're not sure what NAL is. What I'm asking for your permission tonight is, is to look into junior high football as a whole. Of the six of the last four years, four of the last six years.
I understood you.
Yeah. We have nine junior highs and we've had a six-game season for those last six years. We've had a school not be able to participate. Snowcrest joins Orion or North. They've been joining Orion lately. But then this year, South and TH Bell combined because Bell had 12 kids try out. And then three of the previous years, Orion and North combined because they didn't have enough. So I would just like your permission to look in to create a committee with coaches, administrators, parents, to see if we, if it's worth continuing football. It's very expensive. Safety is a huge. We had a kid get taken off in an ambulance last night. Had five or six really bad injuries. Training is, athletic training is always a question and concern. So I talked with President Whittison about this and we're asking him permission to do so. Is that okay?
Yes. So basically, it would be just like any of our boundary exceptions that, or our boundary changes, that kind of thing. They'll just put a committee together with people involved, parents, community members, and discuss what to do with junior high football.
How many other school districts in the state have junior high football?
We're the only one.
The only one.
We're the only one.
Is that the only one in northern Utah or is that in the whole entire state?
I believe in the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
This isn't the first time. We had this discussion a couple of years ago when I was in your seat.
Yeah.
And so it's been out there talking both within the school district as well as the communities on doing Bantam. So I don't think it's anything new, but I support the discussion.
Yeah.
I would support that discussion. I had the occasion to attend several junior high school football games this year and we're going to get some kids hurt with the current situation.
Yeah.
And they're going to get hurt bad.
Mr. Williams, can that discussion be cleared before the investment in whatever is made?
Yeah, that's our plan. We looked into costs for the new junior high.
That's right.
It's between 70, $65,000 and $70,000 just to start a junior high football program at Mountain. That's not the reason to do away with it.
No.
But it is in the discussion.
If they're going to do it anyway.
So we would like to do it quickly in the next month or so and make a decision. I've had lots of input already, people coming to me that wanted me to hear their voice. So I appreciate that. Kelly, yeah?
Sorry. As part of that discussion, will you consider like bringing in a new sport at the junior high?
Absolutely.
Would it be a boy-only sport?
We will need to replace that because of Title IX, right? With equal opportunity for all. So yeah, we would look into and possibly have some discussions around what to replace it with. Yes.
I mean, I've had kids at the junior high now for 10 years and so I've seen both sides. You know, like Orion doesn't have a huge participation. We have a lot of kids that play up at the high school or continue on their Bantam. But it's also interesting that then we have plenty of kids who like to play junior high football that will never play at the high school. So it would be, Orion did win two games. It's their first two games in five years, so there was that.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. My next discussion, I might hate to take so much of your time, is with the creation of the new cone, the new high school, Westfield, we've also needed to adopt and propose an athletic eligibility transfer process for our athletes that will be affected by the boundary change. We met with the executive director of UHSA, Rob Cuff. He gave us three proposals of what new schools have done in the past. Quickly, the three proposals were, one was, anything goes. You can switch to any school that you want to. You just need, and it's good for a year. We quickly took that off the drawing board and we settled on two others. So I talked to each of our principals about these two proposals. First proposal was, you go to the school of the boundary that you live in. The only choice that you have is, if you are a Fremont student currently and you are in the new boundary of Westfield, you can choose to stay at Westfield. You can choose to stay at Fremont or go to the new school. So that was proposal one. The second proposal was, we call it the choice proposal, which says, anybody, of course, that lives in boundary of the, their new boundary school becomes athletically eligible at those new schools. But there would be a choice for students in their adjacent high school to move or to go to that other school. Let me give you some examples. Roy High is affected by the boundary. Kids from Roy High that are not in the Westfield boundary would be able to go to Westfield if they got a boundary exception from the principal to go there and could participate just to Westfield. Westfield and Fremont likewise. There would be some choice there for a one-time decision to be made. And Weaver to Fremont because those boundaries are accepted. Fremont student could not choose to go to Roy High and be athletically eligible there. It would just be from school to school based on those boundaries. Yes, Mr. Ritchie.
So taking that exact same thing you just said.
Yeah.
New Westfield, got a great coach, just got hired. Everybody's excited for the new school, the new field house, the home. Fremont didn't do good this year.
Yeah.
How many and how are they going to say, oh, these guys want to now go to here. Roy doesn't want to go because Roy's winning, still winning. So we're going to deplete hypothetically everything that Clyde just had at Fremont. Is that possible? Because I actually had that same question, Clyde.
Yeah, so in the state, so Skyridge and Lee High, when they split up four or five years ago, they did the choice. They allowed students to choose which one to go to. And what they saw was a balance of athletes because myself and you, you're the better athlete, you went to one school, I would go to the other. And there was a balance of athleticism across. Likewise, in Jordan School District, when Mount Ridge was started, they didn't allow choice and Mount Ridge was depleted greatly. No one wanted to go there for the first three or four years. And now they finally got back up there. So as we, I told you, I met with the principals, that was Mrs. Mitchell's major concern at Fremont is depletion. There's a date, May 1st of this year, at the end of this school year, that they would have to make that decision by so that there's not just free flow. They would give one choice. It would have to be, they would have to get a boundary exception through Weaver School District and then they could make that one choice. And so we came back together as the principals and Matt and unanimously they talked that they would like the choice policy to send to the UHSA so that they could choose.
So are you saying, when you just said to get a boundary exception to Weaver District, so does that mean students from outside the district could boundary accept into our district and be academically eligible?
No.
You're talking within the district.
This only deals with kids affected in those schools that are in our boundary change.
So let's, so like, let's say a Fremont or a Weaver High School student who doesn't live, or is not affected by the boundary changes, now wants to boundary accept into Fremont, they can play sports in that first year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's a few other stipulations in there which help us get some of our kids back. There's a stipulation that says if a kid lives in a school boundary, so one of our resident kids at Weaver High, but goes to another school, they have one year they could come back and be eligible at Weaver High, period. Does that make sense? So it helps us. And we learned this from the other school districts that did it and it helped them recruit some of their kids back because now there's, now there's much more opportunity. Fremont will have a lot more opportunity for kids to play as to where now they got 120 kids on the team, not much opportunity. So.
Sorry, I have one more question. I have at least a couple of parents asking me this. These are parents who are now in Fremont boundaries from Weaver and their ninth grader currently played sports at Weaver High. That doesn't give them, they felt like if their first entry was at Weaver, then they are guaranteed to continue to play at Weaver, but they have to still be boundary accepted into Weaver.
That's correct.
Okay.
But that's strictly, Matt, that's strictly on sports?
That's right.
So if I want to accept?
Athletic eligibility only, yes.
And just for one year?
For this, for the 24, 25 school year. But they need to, May 1st of this coming spring, they would have to declare. So, and they have to get a boundary exception through the principal first before May 1st.
But that boundary exception could be very easily dispensed, whipped, and gone. And I don't mean that literally.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is what Mrs. Mitchell's talking about.
Yeah.
Is exactly what could happen with the juniors there right now.
Yeah.
All saying, we want to go to the new school because new coach, new area, new girl potential to play and maybe win versus what we had based off of what we just seen with the 120 on the site. So them kids potentially could be competing for the same slot with the same kids, only in a different location.
Right.
I have one more question. After May 1st, if they did get a boundary exception to go to a new school, could they change their mind and go back to the original school? They just can't move?
They can as long as they haven't started those athletic seasons. All right. Let me dispel three or four more rumors real quick. We will have all 27 sports, extracurricular activities at the new high school next year. There's lots of people saying that we're not having seniors. We will have seniors. We'll have all varsity sports. No head coaches have been hired or promised their positions. In fact, they just, Friday this week is when they'll open the football, all of all sports. And if a center, if somebody from the junior high, a ninth grader, tries out at the high school and doesn't make it, they can still go back to the junior high and participate. Those are a lot of the rumors that are out there right now. So, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Jennifer Warren, please. You was halfway here before we even called on you. Good job.
You know, trying to conserve time and stuff for you guys. Mine's going to be super quick.
Okay.
With our boundary realignments and all of that, so typically this board meeting would be the board meeting where we would propose the memo for our open enrollment schools for next school year. However, with the boundary realignment and students needing to declare where they're going to attend next year, that is leaving us a little bit up in the air with numbers. And so we will be prepared to present to the board in January what our open enrollment schools will be because we'll be able to compile all the numbers and all of that for each of the schools. So that will change our open enrollment window slightly for this year, which is allowed in state policy due to the boundary realignment. So we'll open it January 3rd after we have the board meeting and then it will close on February 23rd. So it will push it back just a little bit, but the window will not be as long as it is in a regular year. So just so that as you have questions from community members.
So that's the timeframe that people can apply for a boundary exception?
It's open enrollment, yes, for those schools that have available enrollment. Yeah. Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. Let's see, Jennifer Boyer-Thurgood and Nick Karas.
Do I have your permission to propose that to the state, to UHSA, the choice proposal for athletic eligibility?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I have one more question. How will that, like with a May deadline, how will that affect like drill and cheer trails? Because those are usually before May 1st.
They'll have to declare for that.
They'll just have to declare. And so if you chose to go to the new school, you'd have to have done it even more in advance?
That's correct. May will be the deadline.
That's right.
If he tries to take more of your time, just go ahead and push him to the side.
All right, Board and Superintendency, Nick and I are excited to talk to you about a project that we've been working on actually since last April and take you through the process that we've gone through in looking at Chromebook monitoring solutions. So really quickly, in the next 10 minutes or so, we're going to take you first through kind of the backgrounds and leads of why we even started this process. We'll take you through the process itself and the findings that came of it and then our recommendation to the board. So just to give you a little bit of background, when our superintendency first came in and was doing all the listening sessions with different employee groups around the district, one of the main concerns from teachers was that the Chromebooks that students were using, teachers don't have much control of those. You know, kids come, they try to monitor from the back of the room that kids are on task and engaged and trying to pull them back in sometimes and make sure they're in the right spots with them and always engaged in learning was, is a difficult task currently because we don't have a way for them to have any control of those particular devices besides just monitoring throughout the room. So as we started to look at that, well, first of all, let me tell you a little bit about what Chromebook monitoring is. There's several different softwares out there that do it, several different solutions. And what they do is basically track and manage the online activity of the students who are using the devices in the classroom. They ensure that the students are on, you know, safe websites, that they're on productive websites. We do lots of filtering and have current systems in place, but it's still, I mean, things, kids are smart. They figure out ways around things and they are really good at figuring out ways to be on, off-task if they put that much energy into being on-task sometimes, right? I think our jobs would be different. But, so they monitor things like web browsing, what apps kids are using and what content they're accessing. So we currently do have some solutions that we already use. So for our web filtering, we use iBoss. This is something that we heavily depend on to make sure that everything that we are providing for staff and students is filtered and monitored. We also have a software called Bark, which monitors specifically for content, student content that denotes self-harm, is about weapons, is harass, might be forms of harassment. So that is constantly filtering. Administrators get notifications very quickly if something like that shows up in a student's Google Drive or things that they're working with. We also have a product currently called Net Support that we use to monitor in computer labs. As you know, those computer labs have, are slowly disappearing from our schools because students have Chromebooks in their hands, right? And more and more programs are able to be run on those Chromebooks because they're web-based. We currently don't have a solution that our teachers were asking for to monitor those Chromebooks. So Net Support does that, but does that in a very, kind of an old and unfriendly way of doing that monitoring. So we've never brought it into use on Chromebooks before.
So based on the superintendent's listening sessions and the need to find out, we went ahead and did a lot of research, first by asking our neighbors, what were their solutions? We found about four things. Either GoGuardian or Bloxy or a product called Land School. Or to be honest, there's a lot that have no solution, just like we do. And so we, within our research, we figured, okay, it's got to be one of those things. We went ahead and figured we'd do a beta test. So because of the GoGuardian was, we heard about that, it was very common. So we did a beta test. We looked at South Ogden Junior High and Loma View Elementary. We asked them at the end of last year. It was about a three-week-long beta test and we just kind of rolled it out with little to no training just to gauge user-friendly to see how much, how many questions they might have. We kind of just turned it on and said, here you go. And obviously, we had an overwhelmingly positive result. The teachers loved it. They were amazed that we didn't have it previously. So because of that, we decided we probably better go out to RFP and start looking at some solutions. We got six responses. Based on the features we needed and the price, we were able to narrow that down to three solutions, GoGuardian, Bloxy, and Land School. And as we, you know, continued our research, just Land School just didn't have the solution that, it wasn't the product we were looking for. Didn't have the stuff we needed. So we kind of went down to two, GoGuardian and Bloxy. Those are the pilots that we did. We had already done a GoGuardian pilot and one of the things that we loved about it was it also offers parent monitoring at home. That's one of the questions Jennifer and I get the very most. Parents come to us and go, can we turn off YouTube at our house? And I'm like, yeah, just take the Chromebook. But the other thing you can do now is one of these solutions. Bloxy does the same thing. And so we decided to try, since we'd already had a GoGuardian pilot, the first quarter of this year, we tried another pilot at North Ogden Junior and West Weaver Elementary. Again, hugely positive results. We didn't really roll it out with a lot of training just to see what the teacher said. And we, based on our findings, you can see there, GoGuardian includes a parent monitoring solution, but the price together is about $12.44 a student. Bloxy does very similar stuff, but $3.50 a student with parent monitoring included. We love the assessment mode that allows teachers to only allow certain sites during a test. So if you're a teacher, you can, it's like a click of a button and students in your classroom can only get on the sites you say. Easy transition for students. So based on the feedback, the price, the reviews, we went, we would like to pursue Bloxy. It's super reliable. Our feedback was huge. I put in a couple of teacher surveys, results there. You can see, teacher said, these are teachers at North Ogden Junior. Student engagement has increased significantly due to me being able to monitor what they're doing on their screens. Bloxy allows, because Jennifer will show you that in just a second. Bloxy allows me to lock students onto a certain task or assignment, lets me close out of the games and other distractions. That's like one click of a button and a teacher can close the kids out. I can also use it to send links to absent students. Helps me redirect and stay on task and it's very user-friendly. We heard that over and over again. And then it gives me easy access to all the technology in my classroom. Just huge.
Just so you have a visual of what this product looks like, this is what a teacher sees when they have a class running. So each of the blocks is a student. It's a, it's a small picture of what the screen the student is currently on. So if you just glance at it, you can see, are all the kids on the site that they're supposed to be on. Underneath that, you see the smaller little thumbnails in each of those. That's a history of where that student has been. So yeah, they might be on Canvas right now, but you know, what other sites were they just on before you walked behind them to look, right? So you can see who's out, you can see who's in another class. It has features that easily let you, class by class, once the student goes in, the teacher has full control of what's happening in that class. So every teacher has, you know, their own unique thing that they can set up. This is, to me, is the biggest reason that we should get this product. Teachers can set up allow and block lists. So if there's sites I don't want students to go to and they keep going to, I can add it to that block list. Even more powerful in my mind is the allow list. What five sites can these kids go through, go to in my class? Everything else is blocked. It keeps them right on those sites that you want them on. So our problems like, yeah, they're on a game, they're, you know, doing this and that. If you have an allow list set up, they just can't go there. The only things they can access are the things that the teacher wants.
Each teacher can have a separate list?
Uh huh. Yep. Every teacher sets that up.
And they can make it once more for all their classes.
Another thing that was really important to us, and Nick has looked at these products previous to me, but this option wasn't there and this was kind of a deal breaker at that point. But teacher control needs to stop after hours so that teachers have nothing to do with that Chromebook when it goes home to the parent. Bloxy offers that, so we will set up those teacher hours that after, you know, they'll probably be a little different in elementary and secondary, but after a certain time, access for teachers to those Chromebooks at all will go away. This is another. This is another awesome one. So this is a, this is one student's little window. I showed you kind of a teacher view with all the windows, but this is one student's window. All of those little icons underneath do different things. So the one that's circled right there, they can share their screen with everyone else in their class. So they click that button, the teacher then has to approve that and then it pops up on every Chromebook in the classroom so that now every student can see the work or the example that the student is is sharing. That's is kind of a casting solution that we've had a lot, a lot of requests for. All of the other things down there, the little camera lets them, they click that, it takes a snapshot of the student's screen. So there's never any question of, you know, you were on it, no, I wasn't, we've got the little screenshot. There's a little comment bubble, there's a pause. You know, if you can't get students' attention, you just go ahead and pause the screen, right? And they, the Chromebook's frozen. So lots and lots of of teacher control here so that it's being used for educational purposes. Nick mentioned this, but there's an assessment mode. If you're going to give a quiz in Canvas, this automatically locks everything down except that window in Canvas that you want open, so we don't have, you know, other tabs going on during assessment times. So lots, really, really powerful for students. I'll let you talk about the parent stuff.
So as you can see, this is one of the major things, is very easy for the teacher to pull up. You can click logs, you can click download and there you go, you have the student's usage history right there. And that's very easy to grab and then send an email home. You can say, this is what Nick was doing during class today, right?
Something is an apartment we hear requests for a lot. What are my, what are my kids doing at school? They said they're accessing this.
So so not to interrupt Jennifer and Nick, but that same question would be asked, and this is not to be a negative, who's watching the teachers? To make sure the teachers are watching the students, you know what I mean? That's a lot to follow when you have all that stuff.
I can answer that. That's actually one of the reasons we haven't done this in the past is because the old way of doing it was to, we had to pay a computer lab aide to sit and watch that computer screen that was watching all the other computer screens. That's what you're asking, right? This records that. The teacher can, doesn't have to be at their, at their screen at all, this records that. So they, during that class session, they can go back and look at this. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of. Who's watching the watcher, really? That's exactly what it is, you know what I mean?
Yeah, right. I mean, obviously, we would want to train the teachers so that, say, that they know the the things to be able to push and do so that they can continue to teach and be, offer engaging lessons. But I think the the real crux of this is that teachers can be out teaching and the, this is monitoring the Chromebooks for them, right? And then obviously, there's really two easy menus for what the parents see. Again, detailed browsing history and then a really beautiful data. And it doesn't have to be negative. You know, this is, this is something that a teacher can send home as a very positive, look, look at the kind of work that's happening here. And and really, the only negative that feedback that we got was from the students. Because they were like, get this off my machine right now. So that's what, that's the the direction we like to pursue. What are your questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I do have a friend, I've had several friends who have complained in the past that their students, you know, their grades are bad and they find out that they're, they feel like their kid is just browsing when they should be paying attention in class. And so I think that will solve a lot of problems for those parents of kids who just maybe struggle to focus and they're looking at YouTube or whatever. I think that will be pleasing to a lot of parents. But maybe, like, my ninth grader probably won't be happy about this.
My daughter was in the South Ogden Junior High one and she's like, Mom, you know, we're so glad that's gone. I was like, well, hang on, because it might be back then.
Other questions? Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Well done. Heidi Elber, please.
Good evening, board. Here we go. Can you hear me okay? We only have four policies tonight, two that are being presented on second reading and only two that are, Gina loves it when we don't have very many policies. I keep telling her, you know, we have like 150 to go through, so buckle up. The first two are just presented on second reading. One of them is 44, excuse me, 4145, which we talked about last month. It is the, the title of the policy is School Entrance Requirements. It talks about what we need for students as they enter school, birth certificates and immunizations. We did add a section in that policy, and I don't know if you have it in front of you, but it is highlighted. Just in the last month, we were getting a lot of questions from schools, particularly registrars and secretaries, about what to do when a student or a parent doesn't bring in a birth certificate. In our practice, it's sort of been all over the place. And so we have been providing training for secretaries and registrars to help them walk through what we do when we're not getting a birth certificate after the first week, after the second week, after the third week. And we thought, since this policy is already open and we're going to talk about it tonight, we would just put that training, those steps, right into the policy. So the only addition to that policy is what's highlighted on page three that walks the school through what to do when a parent has not brought a birth certificate. Part of that step process is to notify the administrator, who then convenes what's called a review committee. And that review committee is outlined and explained in this policy as well as in state law. Part of the reason that we were presenting this policy is because there was a new state law that provided for a review committee to meet and make sure that the student isn't kidnapped or trafficked. And that committee is made up of administrators, counselors, both school and district as well as community who have been trained in recognizing signs of child trafficking. Because we don't get a birth certificate, we want to make sure that it's not because the child is being trafficked. And so that is part of the step that we put into this process. Any questions on policy 4145? Policy 6900 is another policy we're presenting on second reading as the Interpretation and Translation Services. Nothing new, we didn't receive any comments from the public. We didn't receive comments from the public on on either of these two policies. And so 6900 doesn't have any changes or additions to what we presented last month. And just just to remind you, it's a policy that's required by state law that we have a translation and interpretation service. We have had one in the district for a little while and we just put into policy what that looks like and how we access that, that, that service. The two new policies, the first one is 8800, Learning Material Selection and Reconsideration. Again, this is a policy that we have put into place here partly because we've had a practice, the Selecting Curriculum that the board has been doing for years and years. The curriculum department has looked at RFPs and looked at vendors for textbooks and curriculum and then presented them to the board. But again, the new state law requires us to have some guidelines in place for teachers when they are using what the law now calls a supplemental learning material. So anything that a teacher uses in his or her classroom besides the textbook that isn't approved by the board, a newspaper article that they found the night before or something that they found that would be useful for the class in that moment. Teachers do that all the time. And the legislature requires us now to have a policy in place guiding teachers to know when and what they can use for supplemental material in their classroom. It's not specifically outlining specific types of material, but rather, we've put together some guidelines for what a teacher needs to look at when they're choosing supplemental material, making sure it complies with the standards, making sure it's not sensitive material, which is not allowed in schools, making sure that it's accessible to students and at grade level. And there are a number of of factors that we are going to be training teachers to look at when they bring in materials into their classroom. So policy 8800 is a combination of selecting the curriculum and the textbook materials that are presented to you and just an iteration in policy of what we already do as well as additional information regarding supplemental material. Any questions about policy 8800? We had some good discussions with our policy committee. Board member Burrow was out, but board member Larkin was there and we had some good discussions about what that should look like in the classroom, so I appreciate it.
I was just going to make the comment that especially in the supplemental materials, with the conversation with Jamie Ellis too, just about novels, dramatic performances, musicals, making sure things are in line with, making sure we're not culturally appropriating things, diversity. And just because we've done it in the past or used it in the past doesn't mean that it's, we're in the climate to be using those things currently.
The last policy is policy 4540. This is our student organization policy, which has been in place. We amended the policy to clean it up a little bit. A lot of the changes were just semantics, didn't change any substance. We still have curricular clubs and non-curricular clubs. In Weaver District, we call the second category Groups. So we have our curricular clubs and then our Groups. And the policy, which has been in place, like I said, it mostly was amended to address some semantics. But we did add a section at the very end about fees. We were getting questions from our finance department regarding accounts for these groups, these non-curricular clubs, and should we and are we maintaining money at the school for clubs that really aren't sponsored by the school? And so the last section talks about fees and how, first of all, we shouldn't be charging for groups, for non-curricular clubs. Those are student-initiated clubs, not clubs that are sponsored by the school. But if a non-curricular group, a student-initiated group, does raise money for pizza parties when they're meeting occasionally, then the school can have an account up to $500. But if it's, for example, the mountain biking club, which is in student-initiated, not a school-sponsored club, they raise a lot of money because they have some pretty expensive activities. There's always a parent that is running that club and we say anything over $500 needs to be placed in a bank account outside of school so that the school's not responsible for it. And then at the end of the school year, whatever money is left in an account for a group will be distributed evenly back to the students in that group who put in, put money into that account. So that's the only change to the group and club policy. Any questions on either of these?
There's no carryover on that from year to year. I'll have to go back to zero and then start again.
That's right, that's right. Because so many kids move on from ninth grade to high school and it just didn't seem fair to keep that money and with such a small amount, we're saying, spend it out or don't, or don't charge. There's no reason that you really need to charge us for these non-curricular clubs. Okay, thank you very much.
Bates Elementary, Mary Jo Williams and Grant Hogan, please.
President Woodson, superintendent and the board. Tonight, we want to talk a little bit about, actually, Mr. Hogan is going to talk about school mascots, what they can provide for the students, the parents, teachers and staff at the school. The mascot at Bates Elementary is the Braves and it has not been used in quite some time. This has been done because administrators have carefully considered the impact of the mascot on our Native American students and families and how this mascot may or may not characterize their culture. For that reason, principals have used themes to help create school unity. So this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Hogan, who's the principal of Bates Elementary, to talk with you about a possible change in the mascot at Bates Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you, superintendent, board. Great to be here today. I guess I, I am sorry I'm not wearing a jacket. I was told that I needed to and I apologize. But I wasn't wearing one, so.
Why don't you tell us that we don't have to?
Don't wear a jacket from now on. No, so I've been at, I've been at Bates for just over a year. Was sent from Roy Elementary to Bates. When I got there, I'm very much a unity culture builder of schools and I love building a culture around the community and around the school and the mascot and building that cohesiveness. When I was at Roy, we started with leader me, but also focusing on building a stronger culture within the school. And I feel that we did that for the five years I was at Roy. When I got to Bates, I saw the mascot was the Braves and I wanted to make sure that I was sensitive, but also have a mascot that we could use to rally around. So as I discussed with Mary Jo and made sure we were in the right place and Jamie Ellis as well, I I reached out to the Shoshone leaders in our area and we had a meeting, Jamie Ellis and myself. We met and discussed this with the Shoshone leaders. And it was a really good conversation. We, I mean, I know that Jamie Ellis was super excited. They worked out a lot of things for her as well with unity within the district for the Native Americans, which was super awesome. But got some really good information on where we, what direction we should go and what we could do for Bates Elementary. They gave us a list of some do's and don'ts with building a mascot. And some of the, some of the don'ts, don'ts were, obviously, wear in face paint or war paint. Don't do any type of interpretive dances. The kids don't just make them up themselves, right? Use eagle feathers. Don't have a Native mascot, which that's what it is right now. It's a, it's a brave, right? The logo, don't use some type of a caricature for the logo, right? Which that has what it's been, we pulled some old records from decades ago and then sure enough, there was a little caricature of a mascot, Native American head on the top of the letterhead. And so we haven't used that for decades either, but, and then obviously, music and war cries or different things like that. So with that being said, my proposal is that we move forward and change the mascot for Bates. Regardless of the, whatever represents Bates, is, we would need to change the figure. Like you look at Utah Utes, they still use the Utes, but their mascot is a bird. So we would still need to change a mat, get a mascot that's different than the Braves. And so I propose doing that and being sensitive to what the Shoshone leader said is that we just go ahead and change the mascot totally. So it would be the Bates, whatever, Bison, whatever, right? And I, so that's what I propose to do is, is to get a group together. I looked at the policy 6600, was the closest policy that we could see that kind of helped us, direct us with the, the changing of the mascot. So we, I just propose that we are able to move forward on that as soon as possible so that we can get community involvement and then eventually whittle it down to where we can have a new mascot for Bates, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
The Bates Rock.
Any discussion on that? Go ahead, James.
Well, I just need to compliment Mr. Hogan. Because since I began meeting with him, which was over a year ago, he has had this plan because he has a deep desire to unify his students. And he's been extremely patient, so that every time we meet, I say, how is it going? How is it going? And so I'm really, really grateful to have you presented tonight. And I would be so supportive of you, your actions in that direction. Thank you so much for those students and community.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? So can I go ahead, is that, is that a yes?
Superintendent?
Now, board, I know we'd like to take a little bit of a break before the next formal meeting. I I've covered most of the items listed there on the the backside of your agenda. I just wanted to remind you about the upcoming special board study session on November 17th. We're looking forward to that. USBA is going to take us through a great best practices training and we're going to start talking about a new strategic plan for Weaver School District. So I just wanted to remind you about that. And the rest are just things that I have communicated to you via email recently as well. So we can, we can end with that, thanks. President Woodson asked me to just remind you about the Jubilee coming up. We will have tables at that as a board and that will be on Tuesday, November 21st. And just a quick reminder that that dinner's going to start a little bit earlier this year, 6:30 instead of 7, okay?
Pam, are you taking? Wonderful. Any other discussion, board, that we might have in the study session before we dismiss and we'll take about, depending on which class we look at, six or seven minutes and come back. Stand up and stretch your legs, thank you.